Okay, good evening everyone. Welcome to the Village Council of Royal Palm Beach Annual, I guess we call it our annual organization meeting. It is Thursday, March 17th at six, I guess it's 6:01 PM. And I will ask everyone to please just stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
It says here we're gonna have the swearing in before roll call, right?
Yes. Can we start with you?
Yes, we can start with me, okay.
You'll raise your hand please. And repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, President Hunter.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Protect and defend.
Protect and defend.
The Constitution and government.
The Constitution and government.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the State of Florida.
And the State of Florida.
That I am duly qualified.
That I am duly qualified.
To hold office.
To hold office.
Under the Constitution of the State.
Under the Constitution of the State.
And that I will well.
And that I will well.
And faithfully.
And faithfully.
Perform the duties of mayor.
Perform the duties of mayor.
For the Village of Royal Palm Beach.
For the Village of Royal Palm Beach.
On which I am now about to enter.
On which I am now about to enter. So help me God. Thank you. All right.
(inaudible) Aye, state your name.
Aye, Selena Samius.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Protect and defend.
Protect and defend.
The Constitution and government.
The Constitution and government.
Of the United States.
And of the State of Florida.
And of the State of Florida. That I am duly qualified.
That I am duly qualified.
To hold office.
To hold office.
Under the Constitution of the State.
Under the Constitution of the State.
And that I will well.
And that I will well.
And faithfully.
And faithfully.
Perform the duties of councilman.
Perform the duties of councilman.
For the Village of Royal Palm Beach.
For the Village of Royal Palm Beach.
On which I am now about to enter.
On which I am now about to enter. So help me God. Thank you. All right.
(inaudible) Aye, state your name.
Aye, Selena Samius.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Protect and defend.
Protect and defend.
The Constitution and government.
The Constitution and government.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the State of Florida.
And of the State of Florida.
That I am duly qualified.
That I am duly qualified.
To hold office.
To hold office.
Under the Constitution of the State.
Under the Constitution of the State.
And that I will well.
And that I will well.
And faithfully.
And faithfully.
Perform the duties of councilman.
Perform the duties of councilman.
For the Village of Royal Palm Beach.
For the Village of Royal Palm Beach.
On which I am now about to enter.
On which I am now about to enter. So help me God. Thank you. Okay, that concludes our swearing in. Would like, would you like to make any comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank all of the residents of Royal Palm Beach, the voters coming out, and also for giving me an opportunity to continue to serve the community. I'm excited about it. We've got some really interesting things coming up, and I think some important things that are gonna lay the groundwork for a big future for Royal Palm Beach. So I know we all love this community, and I'm delighted to continue to serve. So, thank you all very, very much.
Now for one?
Thank you. I'd just like to say thank you very much for the opportunity to continue serving the residents of Royal Palm Beach. I truly appreciate it, and look forward to the next two years. Thank you.
And I'd like to thank the citizens of this wonderful village of Royal Palm Beach. I'm delighted that we still have our council still intact. I think this has been a very effective council for many years, and I hope that we'll continue to be able to work together for the years in front of us. I enjoy talking about the Village of Royal Palm Beach to other elected officials, and I enjoy the opportunity when I'm out and about, and I meet the citizens from our village. And I don't, I have never gotten no complaints. I get some ideas about things that we might wanna consider doing, but the general feedback I receive is that our citizens are very happy with the village, the way things have been run, and the way we hope to continue to run things. We are where we are, not something that happened overnight. It happened with consistent, intelligent governance and fiscal management that we've been practicing for several years, and we couldn't do it if we didn't work together as a team up here as a council. So I'm so glad you had the chance for us to continue to do that, and thank you again to the Village of Royal Palm Beach. Okay. Now, we do roll call? We don't have to roll call. Let the record show that all of the council members are present. With that, we're gonna go to our regular agenda, which is item one is the Resolution Number 22-06, Appointing Diane DeSanto at the Village Clerk. Now, how do we, I need a motion?
Yes, please.
So I'll look for a motion.
Motion approved.
Second.
Your motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
No opposed. Diane, you'll continually be the Village Clerk.
Thank you. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Item number two is Resolution Number 22-07, Appointing Stanley G. Hawkman as Village Treasurer. I'll look for a motion.
I make a motion.
Second.
Your motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
No opposed. All right, Stanley, continue to do the fine job that you've been doing. You notice I mentioned good fiscal management? It's important for us here in the village. Okay. Item number three is Appointing of Council Liaison Officers for the Recreation Advisory Board, the Planning and Zoning Commission, and the Education Advisory Board. So we'll start out with a nomination for the Recreation Advisory Board. Do you wanna continue to serve in that capacity?
I would, and they've asked me to continue too.
Oh, they like you, huh?
Still.
All right, can we get a motion in a second?
Motion to...
Do I need, I need a second?
No, not for the appointment.
For the appointments?
You don't need a second for a nomination, so I think the nomination was, I think it was done by nomination, so as long as there's no other nominations, then you can just vote on the nomination.
Okay. You have a nomination.
Nomination.
All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed? Okay, you will continue working with that board. The next assignment is the Planning and Zoning Commission, and Jan, you've been working with those folks, is that something you wanna continue to do?
I'd like to continue, but if anyone else would like to take a turn, I'm all for favor.
I know the feeling.
You're willing to share.
I'm willing to share.
Is there a nomination for Jan?
I make a nomination.
I hope we don't need a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed? Jan?
Thank you.
Thanks for being, wanting to be open to offering that up, but you've still got it.
Thank you.
And finally, our Education Advisory Board. Jeff, do you wanna continue with that?
I would like to do that.
Okay, we have a nomination?
I'll make a nomination.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
No opposed? Jeff, you will continue working with the EAD.
Thank you.
And now is item number four, is Appointing of Council Liaison Officer for Central Palm Beach County Chamber of Commerce and Western Communities Council. So we'll do this separately. Who's doing that now? The chamber, you?
Oh.
No, I think it's Richard.
And then Jan was the Western.
Okay, so you were the chamber.
Yes.
You wanna continue?
Sure.
Okay, do you have a nomination?
I'll make that nomination.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, you have the chamber, you continue with the chamber. Next is Western Community Council, is...
It's me. I don't think they meet very often.
They haven't met in a while, huh?
Yeah.
That's...
So, I'm happy to do that.
I will give them credit, they were set, they did start like these emergency-type reviews. I think we're doing weekly when the COVID event initialized, and a lot of guests, speakers were there, and it was interesting, but beyond that, you might have to sort of stir them up a little bit. Anyway, we have a motion?
I'll make that nomination.
We have a motion, a nomination, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so Jan, you're still with that, okay? Okay, next is Appointing of Village Delegates for the Palm Beach County League of Cities. I think that's you, Jeff?
Yes, I'd like to continue in that capacity.
Okay, I'll look for a nomination for Jeff to continue in that capacity, and any member of the board can serve as a backup. If that's how we normally...
Yes, that's how we do it.
I'll make that nomination, that Jeff be appointed, and then any other council member can serve in a backup capacity.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that is approved then. Next is Appointing of Vice Mayor. Normally, we've been rotating this around, I don't know what the rotation is right now.
Selena.
It's Selena? Okay, do we have a nomination?
Nominate Selena to be Vice Mayor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have no opposed. Selena, you are now the Vice Mayor.
Thank you.
And I think that's it.
That's it.
For this agenda.
That is.
I don't think there's anything else we have to discuss. I'm not gonna, I'm gonna adjourn this meeting, but we're really gonna be in recess to have some cake and coffee, and we reconvene at 6:30. Or 18:30 hours. I'm sorry. I'm...
Okay, all right, we reconvene our regular council meeting for this evening. Once again, welcome to everyone. If you just joined us, we had just finished up our reorganization and swearing in meeting, and we just finished up a little cake and coffee. Wish you were here to share it, but thank you if you're still watching and participating that way. So, welcome to the village, the regular council meeting for the Village of Royal Palm Beach. It is Thursday, March seventeenth, twenty twenty-two. It is six thirty, and we are reconvening. We've already had the Pledge of Allegiance, so we won't do that again. And Diane, please let the record show that all members of council are still present.
Yes, Mayor, I will.
Okay, good. And with that, we're going to start with reports. And I had some information I wanted to share here. Today, this morning, we did have the Thursday of the month Transportation Planning Agency meeting, and just a couple of points of information I want to share on the outcome of that meeting. I think I mentioned a few months back that I was still the... Is that Suri? Are we on?
Yeah, we're on.
Okay. We didn't get the voice today. Oh, okay. That I that we did have a new chair for the TPA, but I had still served as the representative on the South Florida Transportation Agency, which is comprised of Miami-Dade, Broward, and Palm Beach County. And we didn't realize, and I've forgotten this, that usually the chair of our TPA serves on that board. So, we did today is Mayor Ryan Worth was the chair, and I swapped roles. He was representing the TPA on something called the NPOAC, which stands for Master Planning Planning Organization Advisory Council. The council comprised of all twenty-seven NPOs across the state of Florida, and they focus on providing guidance and recommendations on policy that affects that would affect all of the NPOs across our state. So, I am now that representative, and he has switched over, and he's got the the South Florida Transportation role. So, looking forward to that, and I will be giving updates as those meetings happen. They usually meet once a quarter. We have three meetings, I think, coming up for the remainder of the year. The other point of information I think that's relevant to the village is we got an update on twenty twenty-two TPA funding applications. There's something called LIPs and LIIs. It's local initiatives. So, Royal Palm Beach has one item on this, right, that that was submitted for village-wide pedestrian network wayfinding. You want to enlighten us a little bit on that? We're looking at, we have an application for seven hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars.
So, as you know, we're now just finishing up the lighting of the of the bike path along the FPL line. So, what this will be is is signing our whole pathway throughout the entire village. We're, we have completed the bike path throughout the whole village. We have on-street and off-street bike paths on all our major roadways, and then we have the FPL off-street and the path through La Macha and paths through the the preserve area. And what this is, is a signage system for the entire pathway, and then like at the trailheads, it'll have information about the pathway system.
So, are you saying that we have completed our pathway project, or is there still?
The construction of of the pathway throughout the village is completed.
So, you can now circumnavigate the village on bike?
Yes, you can.
Wow.
So, our next major is to create shortcuts.
Okay, I know about.
Cruising shortcuts.
Another subject for another time, but yeah. But you had a question?
I was just going to ask, how many miles do we have? Do you know all that?
Yeah, it's, I think it's around sixty.
Okay.
I'm not exactly sure, but I think it's around, I'm pretty sure it's right around sixty miles. I think it's just under sixty miles.
And so, so the intent of the shortcuts, though, is not for the lazy bike riders, it's for the better connectivity, more choices?
Well, you know, the way we're laid out, we're three miles wide, four miles north, south, and we have, we have one, two, three, four going east and west, and and three, four going north, State Road Seven, the FPL, Royal Palm Beach Boulevard, Crestwood, you know, four going north and south. So, it's a pretty, it's pretty, it's broken up a pretty good grid. We just need to.
Connect it.
It's a mile, it's two miles from from Southern Boulevard to Okeechobee Boulevard, and two miles from Okeechobee to our northern border. And so, that's, that's, it's all out there.
Some great trails. Really good stuff.
In past years, when two or three years reported this project, and Chris had given us updates that this initiative was underway, I recall us discussing, saying that at some point when this was finished, maybe we should have a special bike ride, you know, for in the village to take everyone through it. We kind of participate and lead the way through the whole, you know, and I know you're an avid bike rider, you're a professional. What's the thoughts on that? Is that something we should look at?
Well, we looked at combining that with the the March bike thing, and and we do kind of, we kind of have different lengths for that, and one of them stays within the park, and others go out onto the trail and do exactly that.
Stay with sixty miles?
No, no, we we would just go out, like, 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 take, go out of the park and go over to like Preservation Park and the rec center and and go that path, you know, to and from.
When does our rent this year?
This. Next Saturday, right? Is it?
Yeah, this Saturday is seafood. Right, okay. All right, well, let's, let's do that.
It sounds good.
We need to really get the word out to to the communities.
We need to get the markers in place, though. Otherwise, we get lost.
Oh, and that's what the wayfinding sign is.
Wait, you'll, you'll track this application, how we're doing?
Yes, it will.
Good. With that, Selena.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to have lots of phone numbers for you tonight. Ready? All right. So, the senior meal program has started, actually starts on Monday. It's a sixty-plus over at the rec center, Monday through Friday at one o'clock. You must call five six one seven five three one two four one to register. Silver Sneakers has started up again, the classes to help improve stability and strength for sixty-five plus. That's Tuesday from two to three, and Saturdays from ten to eleven. For all our senior programs are over at the rec center, you can call five six one seven five three one two four one. The Adult Basketball League is starting up on Sunday mornings over at the rec center, and you can register now, and that's for the season that starts in May.
What league is that?
That's the senior, the Adult Basketball League.
How senior you have to be?
No, just adult, over eighteen. This one's the, yeah, this one's the adult.
Boy, that's, okay. The young adults.
You can do the young adults, but there, there's some, there's some longtime basketball players out there that can, yeah, that that wind the the younger ones. Vivid Taylor Music Program is over there, and it's great because it focuses on children ages five to sixteen. So, she's offering lessons in piano, voice, and theater. Her phone number is nine one seven nine nine one five seven nine zero. Over at Commons Park, we talked about, we have a couple of events coming up. The Seafood Festival is this Saturday and Sunday. They open up at eleven o'clock. The Bike Trail Rodeo is next Saturday, the twenty-sixth, at nine AM over at Commons Park. It's a free event, and they're doing three different courses out there. So, you can do a three-mile, a five-mile, or a seven-mile course. They're doing giveaways and drinks. That phone number for more questions is five six one seven five three one two three two. And then, the Parkside Cafe and Catering is opening up at the Sporting Center. So, that's another one that that'll be completely finished. They did a great job renovating that. There's a free VITA tax service, and those are for individuals who make sixty-eight thousand, who max out at sixty-eight thousand and less. So, Mondays and Wednesdays from three thirty to eight thirty, and Saturday from nine AM to two PM. And you can go to taxesfiledfree.org for more information. So, they'll do those for free for anybody who attends. We do have food trucks and concerts coming up. So, Friday, tomorrow night, we have Matthew Curry Band, and you can go to royalpalmbeach.com for all of our events and coming up. And I have one more thing to bring up. We have right now a tentative meeting scheduled for April seventh as a regular council meeting, and that is to go over the appointments of the different volunteer board members that we have. So, the EAB, the Education Advisory Board, the Recreation Advisory Board, and Planning and Zoning. So, I'd like to propose that we do, we don't have the meeting on April seventh, and we have it on April twenty-first during the regular council meeting, because all of the events, these board meetings are after the April twenty-first council meeting. So, if everyone's okay with that, we would just appoint members at the April twenty-first meeting.
Okay.
Is that right? Okay, thank you. That completes my report.
Okay.
I'd just like to say, congratulations, Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, and Councilman Mayor, on continuing on the board. We're happy to have you for another few years.
Thank you.
Happy to be here.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Speaking of the Education Advisory Board, so we met on March the tenth, and we didn't have a school in the spotlight, but we did have our central regional superintendent, Valerie Haynes, come and give us kind of an overview of all of the schools in Royal Palm Beach at one time. So, it was an interesting collection of reports. Our elementary schools are doing outstanding. They're all A-rated schools, but all of the schools are struggling with, the kids are struggling with trying to recover, trying to catch up from the pandemic. And so, there's a lot of emphasis being put on the catch-up and also the actual monitoring to see where kids are right now as they continue to apply some of these techniques like academic tutoring, which is available at all of our elementary schools before, during, and after school, and at our middle school and high school. Before and after-school tutoring is available as well. There are a lot of other things that they're doing along that line, but most of it is really focused on trying to get kids back up in English language, math, and science. It was interesting because for initially coming out of the pandemic, the the mathematics seemed to be the the most troubled area, the most problematic areas as they did some diagnostic testing. That has been recovered in the first couple of months of the school year, but now unfortunately, science seems to be a bit troubled. So, the the in-person education, no doubt about it, is the best way to teach kids. It is absolutely. But they do have some interesting mechanisms, especially for math, which is a tutorial, kind of a service that's available to kids online. So, that, I don't know about you all, but when I took math, I knew exactly what the teacher was talking about while they were working on the problem in the class. And then I got home, and all of a sudden, it was totally foreign to me. So, having that access is really, really valuable, and I think it's going to make a huge difference for for the kids. So, the school district is working hard to try to bring the kids back up to where they should have been without that two-year hiatus that that we all suffered. The Education Advisory Board also was told by the school district about a plan to utilize the grounds around Crestwood Middle School, especially to the south, to temporarily locate the Malaluka Middle School for the coming school year, and then replace that school with Windbrook Middle School. Those two schools are going to be completely renovated totally, and so they need to relocate the kids in order to do that. Of course, the question is, they'll be doing it with portable. So, the majority of the student population from those schools will be separate from Crestwood Middle School for the most part. But the concern was about transportation, about traffic and the impact on traffic, and they have done things like staggering start and times and that type of thing. Still and all, it's something that we really need to keep an eye on because that road system is pretty well fixed, and you already have two schools in that area. And so, as we add an additional middle school, it's it's something that we're going to have to make sure we're working closely with the school district on. The last thing we did, or the Education Advisory Board did, was they picked fifteen students of the twenty-three scholarship applications that we received this year to be interviewed on Saturday, April twenty-third for the ten scholarships that we give each year. And I did want to mention that Royal, the Royal Palm Beach Feeding South Florida Partnership continues on at Commons Park on first and third Wednesdays. We had a milestone this past Wednesday, that was yesterday, yesterday, and it was the hundredth Wednesday that we have actually done the food distribution. And and that, that's pretty remarkable. It really is. And so, the numbers of, to try to indicate the the actual achievement as a result of that is three point six million pounds of food have been distributed to more than sixty thousand families. The staff, of course, we couldn't do it without the Parks and Recs staff. They've been fantastic, and they have actually worked more than eight thousand hours, shoulder to shoulder, with twenty to thirty volunteers every Wednesday, and that continues. The volunteer staff is interesting, or the volunteer group is interesting because it changes over time, as you might expect. This time of the year, we have a lot of snowbirds that are looking for something to do, and good for them. They come and join us. We appreciate it. And we've had CarMax attend in the past, and they were there this past Wednesday for our hundredth distribution. And when they show up, they show up in force, and it's a big help. So, we really appreciate all of the different community activities and organizations that participate in this thing. I think it's an outstanding outreach program and one that we have every right to be proud of. So, the last thing I want to mention is, I think we all know that it's Women's History Month, and I I noticed in the paper that Dr. Alina Alonso has been selected as one of USA Today's Women of the Year for her work as Director of Palm Beach County Health Department during the COVID pandemic. I mean, anybody who's dealt with her, I think, as far as I'm concerned, walk away with a sense of having worked with a true professional, one that can handle the most difficult circumstances with a steady and a trustworthy kind of an approach. So, she deserves that, and so, my compliments to her, and I'm sure we offer it as well. The last thing is, the legislative session was over on March the eleventh. Now, we see what the effect is, and I'm going to let our village attorney talk more about that.
Sure.
We dodged a couple bullets, even if it was just for lack of time at the legislature. Let me, just before I hit those, Senate Bill six twenty did pass, and that was the bill that allows a business to file a lawsuit against the municipality for business damages. You would have to be a business that was, I think, in a, operating for at least three years in the jurisdiction. You have to show a minimum fifteen percent reduction in profit based on the regulation that was adopted. There are certain exemptions. Ordinances enacted to implement land development regulations or building or fire codes are exempt. Any ordinance that's required by state or federal law or or to adopt your local budget, all of those would be exempt from from this. And and there was, there are certain caps on maximum amounts of damages that can be awarded. So, there, you know, some of the rough edges were smoothed out, but that one did, that one did pass and will become effective upon being signed by the governor. One of the good ones that passed was House Bill one oh five, and that allows local governments to restrict smoking within any public beach or public park that the local government owns, or any county-owned park in their jurisdiction, as long as it wouldn't conflict with a county ordinance. Interestingly, the the cigar lobby did a good job because you are not allowed to restrict smoking of unfiltered cigars. So, you know, Ortero Fuente and.
Wow, that was a close one.
Made the day. But other than that, the smoking ban did pass, other than the cigar exemption. House Bill seventy forty-nine passed, and that has to do with how we advertise our legal ads and and public notices. This provides an option for the local government to, instead of using the newspaper, to use a, what's called a publicly accessible government website. So, that does not include the municipality's website. It actually has to be a website that is the county's official website or a secondary website that the county provides for the purpose of publishing legal notices. And then, if you decide to, if that, if the county provides that that opportunity, then under the statute as it went into effect, well, it'll be effective January first of twenty twenty-three, but then there is still a once-a-year requirement to publish in print media the fact that you use the website for your legal notices. So, those all passed. The good news is, a few things that we were worried about. The good news is, a few things that we were worried about did not pass. Senate Bill 974, which was the one that would have increased the amounts on sovereign immunity limitations, did not make it through. So sovereign immunity limits of 200,000 per person and 300,000 per occurrence will remain in effect across the board. That will not change this year. Good for all of you and the manager. Senate Bill 510 did not pass. That was the one that would have required you to file, instead of the annual Form 1, you would have had to file Form 6. That did not make it through. So the other one that did not make it through, and this is one of the very first ones that I had mentioned to you earlier in the year, was Senate Bill 280, and that's the one that would have required the municipalities to prepare and file a business impact statement in advance of adopting an ordinance. That did not make it through. So all in all, it could have been a lot worse than it was. The business damage one, as I said, did make it through, but some of the other ones that started out as being very problematic and cause for concern did not, which isn't to say they won't be back next year, but at least we have some time. So that, it will be that report, and...
Any questions?
No, but a lot of those changes, like on the business damages one, is due to the Florida League of Cities lobbying. That's basically what they do when they see something that's either supported by the leadership, which is definitely one that you're probably not going to overcome completely. You find ways to lessen the impact on the cities. And so they come up with things like a set of exemptions or caps on the max damages and things of that nature. So they do good work.
Okay. Jay?
Good evening, everyone. Happy St. Patrick's Day. I do not have a report. Just want everyone to have a happy day.
Thank you.
Great.
No report, Mayor. Thank you.
Anything else, Pete?
No, sir.
Okay, good. All right, that concludes our reports. This time, is there anyone here who has a petition they'd like to present to the council? Now would be the time to do that. Seeing no petitions, I'm closing the floor to petitions sent. Next item is statements from the public. Diane, do we have any advanced comments from items not on the agenda or on the consent agenda?
Not received.
Ray, do you have anyone who's raised your hand out there who has a comment on a non-agenda item or a consent agenda item?
No, Mayor.
Okay. I have no comment cards. We have a hand up. Come on up.
In reference to the congregate meals, you have to apply...
State your name for the record.
Carolyn Hamer, 2220 Ridgewood Circle, Royal Palm.
Thank you.
I'm also with the senior referral program. In reference to that program, the congregate meals, you have to apply for that, and you have to apply in person. So they will not fill out the application over the phone for you.
Okay.
In addition to that, if you accept the congregate meals, you forego meals on wheels. You will not be eligible for both.
In place of that, okay.
Yeah, so you need to choose wisely.
What, is there any particular information you have to bring with them when they register?
I don't know, just, they just have to appear in person.
In person, okay.
Yeah, to make that application. They don't, they won't accept it over the phone at all.
Okay. They don't have to prove your age?
Don't think so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, any other members? I don't have any comment cards. Was anyone else, I have a comment not on the agenda or a comment on the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'm closing the floor to non-agenda items and consent agenda items. And was that Diane? Could you give us the consent agenda, please?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Number one, approval of the minutes of the council regular meeting of February 17, 2022. Two, fiscal year 2021 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. Three, approval of a special event permit for POTTC events to hold a sea cruise festival at Royal Palm Beach Commons on Saturday, March 19th, from 11:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. and Sunday, March 20th, 2022, from 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Four, approval of a special event permit for the Royal Home Brewing Company to hold a business anniversary event at 543 North State Road 7, Suite 103, in the Commons at Royal Palm Beach Shopping Plaza. The event will take place on Saturday, March 19th, 2022, from 12:00 p.m. until 5:00 p.m. Five, approval and authorization for the village manager to execute the consent to assignment of Retirement Plan Services Administrative Services Agreement in order to assign the current agreement with the Prudential Insurance Company of America to Great West Life and Annuity Insurance Company and its affiliates operating under the brand name Empire Retirement. Six, adoption resolution number 2205, the resolution of Village Council, the Village of Royal Palm Beach, Florida, approving the Bicycle Pedestrian Network Wayfinding Project as proposed and committed to fund ongoing operations and maintenance through the useful life of the project. Seven, approval and authorization in accordance with established policy to make a budget amendment for Fund 303 in the fiscal year 2021-2022 budget. Set amendment to transfer a total of $45,000 from TRAMs PR 2106 to Skate Park Relocation PR 2216. Eight, approval and authorization for the village manager to enter into an agreement with AquaFire Maintenance and Performance Systems Incorporated for well abandonment services located at the former state of the water treatment plant located at 10930 Okeechobee Boulevard by piggybacking the City of Palm Bay Utilities Contract, number 450217, while repairs, maintenance, and rehabilitation services.
Okay, thank you. Are any members of the council have questions, comments?
I'd like to pull Consent Agenda Item Number 2, please. It's the same one.
Same one?
Yeah.
So we want to pull it twice? Okay. Any other items, questions, comments? If not, then I'll look for a motion to approve all items on the consent agenda with the exception of item 2.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any polls? We have no polls. Diane, please let the record show that the agenda item was approved, consent agenda was approved with the exception of item 2. And who would like to report? You passed, no, you passed, yeah.
With our new comprehensive financial report, if someone could make, from the new Markham company, just the overview of the highlights of the annual report.
You are on, sir. Yeah.
The way we can see your face on the cameras. Diane, is the mic on?
Maurizo with Markham LP, the external auditors for the Village of Royal Palm Beach. Good afternoon, honorable mayor and village council members. I'm here today to present the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, which you have, should have a copy with. And if you want to follow along, I'll make reference to the printed page numbers. The first page I want to go over is Page 1, printed Page 1, which is our auditor's report. Page 1 is our independent audit report, and it has several sections. The first section is titled "Report on Financial Statements," and it makes reference to what we've audited, and it makes reference to the fact that this audit is covering the fiscal year ended September 30th, 2021. The second paragraph titled "Management's Responsibility" makes reference to what is management responsible for. And they're responsible for preparing this document in accordance with US GAAP, United States Generally Accepted Accounting Principles. And the third paragraph titled "Auditor's Responsibility" makes reference to what we, Markham as the external auditor, is responsible for. And we're responsible to express opinions on these financial statements based on our audit. The reason it's plural opinions is because you have different major funds and non-major funds, so we're actually giving several opinions in this report. If you turn the page with me to Page 2, you find our opinions paragraph, which is the most important paragraph. And just to read, it reads as follows. "In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly non-material respects the respective financial position of the governmental activities, business-type activities of each major fund, the aggregate remaining fund information of the village as of September 30th, 2021." And that is an example of a clean opinion or an unqualified opinion. And that's the only opinion you as an elected body want to be associated with. In regards to what we perform, which is a financial external audit, it's the highest regard that one could receive. So congratulations to you and the board and management. Following our auditor's report, if you turn to Page 4, that's the beginning of the management discussion analysis. And the management discussion analysis starts on Page 4 and takes you to Page 9. So this document is over 100 pages. And if you wanted to focus on reading a section of a document that summarizes your current year activity, it's the management discussion analysis, again, from Page 4 to 9. The nice thing about this section is it compares quantitative prior year activity versus current year activity, but it provides you also the underlying justification of what is driving those changes during the fiscal year. So again, that's the MDA starting on Page 4. Following the MDA, you turn with me to Page 10. Printed Page 10, you have the Statement of Net Position. And on top, you have all the assets that are accumulated as of September 30th, 2021, minus your liabilities, gets you to your net position, or some may call it equity. And if you notice your net position as of year end, it's 100, just over 163 million. That being said, over 73.3 million is titled unrestricted. Your unrestricted net position is what could be used to meet your ongoing obligations, which is driven by a high, high portfolio of cash and investments. If you look to the top of the Statement of Net Positions, you have cash and then cash equivalents of short of 29 million and investments of almost 72 million, which is resulting a financially sound Statement of Net Position as of fiscal year end. One of the things that we do, that we're required to do under the Florida Auditor General, is compare the Village of Royal Palm Beach to its peers. So they provide us a list of what is considered comparable municipalities, and we compare you to your peers in regards to liquidity, operational capital, your capital assets, your liabilities to current asset ratios, how you're funding your FRS pension plan. And I could say that Village of Royal Palm Beach, and when you look at the reports and looking at the five-year trends, it's leading the pack when it comes to your peers. Because you have high liquid assets that drives down to your net position. In addition to that, if you were to compare the fiscal year 2021 document to the 2020, you'll notice that there's a significant decrease in your net pension liability. Your net pension liability reflects what it would have cost for you to fund 100% your FRS commitment. And this year is just shy of 4 million as compared to last year, which was over 11 million, which is driven by the high investment return portfolio of FRS that trickles down to the Village of Royal Palm Beach. So again, very healthy balance, Statement of Net Position as of year end. Following the statements, you have the footnotes that goes into rather detail of your investment portfolio, your liabilities, your current receivables. But I want to highlight another section of our reports. If you turn with me to Page 95. This is the beginning of the reporting section, printed Page 95. And this is our report under government auditing standards. So we are performing a financial audit, but under government auditing standards, we also have to look at your internal controls and compliance. So on Page 95, I'm defining what an internal control deficiency is and the difference between a material weakness and a significant deficiency. And at the bottom, I mentioned that during our audit, we did not identify any deficiencies in internal controls that we considered to be material weaknesses. So under government auditing standards, if I was to identify a deficiency, I don't have the liberty of just reporting them to you verbally. I must use this document to do so in writing. So again, this document reflects the conclusion that there's no deficiencies to report. And if you turn with me on Page 96, you'll find our compliance paragraph. We're making reference to, we do consider the compliance requirements of the village. So as part of a financial audit, we look at the transactions during the year, look at your budget document, look at your procurement code and make sure that it's being followed. But we perform procedures to ensure that the village is following the rules and regulations of the state as also as granting agencies. And we mention here that as a result of our test, we disclosed no instances of non-compliance. So again, that's also under government auditing standards. Aside from the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, on March 10th, when we released the document, we also included a second attachment, which is a required communication letter. And in summary, that required communication letter is used as a tool to summarize any disagreements we had with management regarding the recording of transactions or the reporting of any amounts in this document. And we're pleased to mention that there was no disagreements, no differences of an opinion of how to record a transaction or reflect an amount. As a matter of fact, if you recall, this is the first year that we're performing the audit, so it did require a little bit more help from the finance department, and Stan and his team were able to help us. Very, very pleased when we requested information, they were able to do so, and we didn't miss a beat to make sure that this document was issued in the month of March. So thank you to city management and the finance department for helping us and being patient with us, given the fact that when you transition to a new auditor, there is a learning curve. So again, I appreciate it for the time and the patience. That summarizes the presentation, and I'll open it up if anybody has any questions.
Actually, just real quick, when you'd mentioned that comparing Royal Palm to its peers.
Yes.
What's your definition of peers? Is it the size? Is it the budget? Is it the location?
So the Florida Auditor General provides us what is comparable peers. And the Village of Royal Palm Beach falls under certain population demographics and also total property taxable values. So they provide us a list of who should be, we should be comparing you to.
Can you give us any of those things?
I'll mention some of them. City of Altamontes Springs, City of Cooper City, City of Dundin, City of Jacksonville Beach, City of Maitland, Town of Miami Lakes, City of North Miami Beach, City of Oakland Park, City of, Village of Pinecrest, City of Punta Gorda, City of Venice, City of Vero Beach, City of Winter Gardens. So it's several.
And that's widespread area of the whole state.
Yes, it goes through the whole state of Florida.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No, no questions, just a comment. And a congratulations to Stan and your team for, again, another year of stellar books, ethical standards, practices. And, you know, this report shows and demonstrates how well your team does, and we are very appreciative of your work. Thank you. On behalf of all the residents, thank you.
I was just going to say, and your presentation was very good. I appreciate that.
Yeah, welcome.
Yes, welcome. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Do you have any comments? I'd just like to close by saying, as I mentioned earlier, is it okay if I use a football analogy? The NFL team that makes it to the Super Bowl, and they have a great year, and they're winners and they're champions. But the real challenge for those champions is sustaining that same success year in and year out. This report reflects that we, as a governance body, are sustaining the same success year in, year out in terms of fiscal management and good governance. So thanks to all of you, and Ray, and everyone, and Stan, on us being able to sustain our success, and I want us to continue to do that. So thank you very much. Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve Consent Agenda Item Number 2.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any polls? We have no polls. Diane, please let the record show that Consent Agenda Item Number 2 was also approved, 50. With that, we'll start the regular agenda item number 1, which is a public hearing to consider Application 21-42, an application by Neil Petroleum, Inc., in adoption of Resolution 22-03, confirming the council's action. The applicant is seeking a major site plan modification approval to amend the approved landscape plan on an existing auto mold service station in order to remove and change certain plant materials for a property located at 11318 Okeechobee Boulevard. This is a quasi judicial process, so we'll have to swear, do a swearing.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is the applicant here? Can you come to the podium and state your name for the record, please, ma'am?
I'm Dana Gillette with Erdman Anthony.
Thank you. Can you raise your right hand for me? In Bradford, I'll swear you in at the same time if you can hear me. Do you both swear affirm that it's all the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
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 Thank you. And I'll turn back to the council and ask if there are any ex parte disclosures on this item that need to be disclosed?
None.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Uh, the app, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. The applicant Neil Petroleum is seeking approval for a major site plan modification in order to amend the approved landscape plan to reflect current conditions and to add landscaping in certain areas to bring the site up to current village code requirements for a property situated within the Royal Plaza North Shopping Center and located at 11318 Okeechobee Boulevard. Again, the intent is to update the approved landscape plan to reflect current conditions, replace existing trees in poor condition with new species and the addition of new landscape materials, including new shade trees, palm trees and shrubs. Overall, the proposed site plan is in conformance with the village's requirements from the neighborhood commercial zoning district. This item was considered by the Plains Zoning Commission at its regular meeting on February 22nd, 2022. It was recommended for approval by vote of four to zero. Staff is recommending approval of this application number 2142. With that being said, Mayor, I'll turn the floor back over to you. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Bradford. Um, applicant like to make some comments?
No, no comments. If you have questions, I'll try to answer them.
You're satisfied with the way it was presented? Okay, um, do we have any advance comments, uh, for this agenda item, R1? Ray, we have anyone with their hands raised?
No, we do not, Mayor.
Okay, I have not received any comment cards for agenda item R1. If anybody would like to comment, now would be the time. If not, I'm closing public comment on agenda item R1, open for questions and comments from members on council. If there are none, I'll look for a motion.
Make a motion to approve, uh, regular agenda item number R1.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, please let the record show agenda item R1 was approved 5-0.
Thank you very much.
Agenda item R2 is a public hearing to consider application 21-75, an application by Total Royale Apartments LLC for the consideration of a landscape waiver from village code sections 15-131 sub D sub 1 to allow for a minimum of an 11 inch, of an 11 inch and maximum of one foot 10 inch encroachment into a quiet 25-foot perimeter landscape buffer due to a proposed garage structures within a 401-unit multifamily residential development on approximately 29.356 acre parcel of land laying within the multifamily residential district, zoning district located on the south side of, of Southern Boulevard, approximately 0.27 miles west of State Road 7. This is a quasi judicial, uh, process, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If the applicant could approach the podium and be sworn in. When you get there, can you state your name for the record?
Brian Tuttle.
Thank you. Raise your right hand for me. Do you swear affirm that all the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. I'll turn back to the council and ask for ex parte disclosures on this item.
Okay, conversation with the applicant.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you.
You're up, Bradford.
Uh, the applicant is requesting a landscape waiver from village code section 15133D1 buffering the residential uses adjacent, right, adjacent to roadway. This request is associated with a subsequent item on the agenda, application 2162, which is a site plan modification and architectural and aesthetic review consideration for an approved but not yet built 401-unit residential development. This slide shows the location of Pod 2 in relation to the other pods located within the overall master plan. Village Code Section 15133D1 requires that the perimeter landscape buffer be a minimum of 25 feet for the subject residential development. The request is to allow a minimum of 11 inch, the maximum of one foot 10 inch encroachment into the required buffer. The applicant contends that the applicant is proposing to, quote, the applicant is proposing to install garage structures where standard parking spaces were previously located as part of a site plan revision. The design of the garage structures is such that there are garage structures that encroach into the required 25-foot landscape buffer, end quote. Staff is recommending approval of this landscape waiver request and generally concurs with the applicant's assessment. Staff believes that this is the minimum waiver necessary to allow reasonable use of the property as proposed. This item was considered by the Plains Zoning Commission at its regular meeting on February 22nd and recommended approval by vote of four to zero. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of this application number 2175. With that being said, Mayor, I'll turn the floor back over to you. Thank you.
Okay, would the applicant like to make any comments?
No, he does not.
So you're satisfied with the way it was presented by staff?
I am.
You're going to keep getting up and down? Okay, this is a quasi judicial process, so everything on the record is very important, right? Okay, um, do we have any, uh, comments, advanced comments on agenda item R2? Ray, we have anyone with their hand raised?
No, Mayor.
Okay, I have not received any comment cards on agenda item R2. If anyone would like to comment, that would give you an opportunity now. Seeing none. I'm closing public comment on agenda item R2 and look for comments or questions from members on council.
I just have a quick question and Bradford can answer it. Um, just for clarification, Bradford, the waiver that they're asking for the landscaping is because of building the parking, um, structures, correct? It's not as though they're not, okay, and that's the reason why?
It's just the way it looks on the walls.
Yep, okay, thank you.
Questions, comments? No further questions and comments from council. Look for a motion.
I make a motion to approve regular agenda item number two.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Diane, let the record show agenda item R2 was approved 5-0. Agenda item R3 is a public hearing pursuant to section 163-3225 sub 1 Florida statutes to consider application number 19-0120, requesting approval of an amendment to the previously approved development agreement between the village and the developer for a proposed 401-unit multifamily residential development on approximately 29.356 acre parcel of land located on the south side of Southern Boulevard, approximately seven tenths of a mile west of State Road 7.
Do I need to be sworn in or anybody?
No, this is, no one needs to be sworn in for this.
Very good. I'll just jump right into it then. Uh, the applicant is requesting approval of an amendment, um, of a previously approved development agreement between the Village of Royal Palm Beach and the developer of Southern Boulevard properties, Pod 2. The execution of the agreement was required as part of the development approval. As a minimum unit floor areas proposed were less than those required by the village code in multiple, in the multiple family residential zoning district at section 2686 for H. To proceed with such requests, the project developers required to enter into an agreement with the village in accordance with the Act and subject village code section. The applicants, the, the proposed amendment is needed as the developer is proposing modifications to some unit floor areas. The proposed changes will increase the size of some units and the overall average size of units for the entire development in comparison with the sizes approved under the original agreement. However, the units will continue to be less than the requirement of the village code in the multiple family residential or in 14 zoning district. This item was considered by the Plains Zoning Commission at its regular meeting on February 22nd, 2022. It's recommended for approval by vote of four to zero. Staff is requesting recommendation of approval be, um, of this application. With that being said, Mayor, I'll turn the floor back over to you. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Bradford. Would the applicant like to make any comments or were you satisfied?
Yeah, I'm satisfied. I just want to summarize for you what the major site plan mod was. We went back and we added elevators to about half the buildings. We added fenced-in dog yards, we almost 80 of those. We added about 50 or 60 garages, 50 or 60 carports. It was just a general way to upgrade the quality of the apartment site.
Okay, thank you. Diane, we have any advanced comments from members of the public? Ray, anyone with their hand raised out there?
No, Mayor.
I have not received any comment cards on this agenda item R3. Uh, if anyone would like to comment, now would be the time. Seeing none, I'm closing public comments on agenda item R3, open for questions and comments from members on council. There are none, I'll look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve a regular agenda item R3.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, let the record show that the agenda item R3 was approved 5-0. Okay, agenda item R4 is a public hearing to consider application 21-62, an application by Total Royale Apartment LLC, Apartments LLC in resolution 22-02 confirming the council action. The applicant is seeking site plan modifications and architectural approval for a 401-unit multifamily residential development located on the south side of Southern Boulevard, approximately 0.27 miles west of State Road 7. This is a quasi judicial, uh, item, so we have.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The applicant's been sworn in. I'll just ask the council if there are any ex parte disclosures on this item?
Staff.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, Bradford, you're on.
Yes, sir. Um, this slide shows the location of Pod 2 in relation to the other pods located within the overall master plan. It's the pod highlighted here in blue.
We see you, Bradford, not the slide.
Bradford, you turned your camera on, not the, the screen. I know where you are now.
I'm really in.
I'm glad you're in your office.
Yeah, it could have been a lot worse. Okay, where were we now?
All right. Um, this slide shows the location of Pod 2 in relation to the other pods located within the overall master plan. It's a pod highlighted here in blue. Um, the request proposes to revise the unit mix at six detached garage structures, add 11 carport structures, add another mail kiosk, change the building type on four buildings, add fenced yards, install additional handicap spaces, install ramps and both trash compacters, add parking inlet, coordinating of dog run entry and divide the dog park based on animal size. And here is a illustration of that site plan. This slide shows the elevations of proposed detached garages and carports, as you would expect. This is the garage, this is the garage and here is the carport. In reviewing this petition, village staff considered conformity with the Village Royal Palm Beach and zoning code pertaining to the multifamily residential zoning district. Specifically, the proposed project meets the requirements for the multifamily residential zoning district in regards to parcel size, parcel width, setbacks, purbiest area, parking requirements, landscape areas and maximum building height. Overall, except for the parking variances previously granted by village council, reductions in apartment unit sizes is approved by the development agreement, approved by the village council. In landscape waiver requests, the proposed site plan modification is in conformance with the village's requirements for the multifamily residential RN14 zoning district. This item was considered by the Plains Zoning Commission at its regular meeting on February 22nd, 2022 and was recommended for approval by a vote of four to zero. Staff requests a recommendation of approval be, um, of this application 2162. With that being said, Mayor, I'll turn the floor back over to you. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Bradford. The applicant like to comment?
No comment.
So you approve of the presentation presided by staff. Okay. Um, Diane, any advanced comments on agenda item R4? Ray, any hand raised?
And no, Mayor.
Okay, I have not received any comment cards on agenda item R4. Anyone here would like to comment? Now would be the time. Seeing none, I'm closing public comment to agenda item R4, open up for questions and comments from members on council.
Actually, I just have a comment. So to the applicant, thank you very much for making the changes. I think it really helps and it's a lot of the stuff that our residents are asking for, so thank you.
Timing couldn't have been better. Okay. No comments or questions from members on council. Look for a motion.
I make a motion to approve regular agenda item number four.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, let the record show agenda item R4 was approved 5-0. Agenda item R5 is a public hearing to consider application number 20-15, an applica, an application by Evans Land Consulting in adoption of resolution 20-17 confirming, confirming the council action. The applicant is seeking final plat approval for one parcel of land totaling approximately 156.25 acres located on the south side of Southern Boulevard, approximately 2, uh, 0.27 miles west of State Road 7. Bradford, you're on.
Yes, sir, thank you. Um, as you can see here, illustrated on this slide is the plat. Um, the proposal was for an application for final plat approval for a 156-acre parcel of land located on south side of Southern Boulevard, approximately 0.27 miles west of State Road 7. The land being platilized within zoning districts that allow multifamily, single-family, commercial and public park uses. The applicant is proposing to plat the 156 acres as eight separate tracts, now referred to as Total Royale. Um, the property is being plotted to allow for a planned commercial residential development. The final plat is consistent with the proposed development of the site. The proposed plat conforms to the planning requirements of village code, more specifically, section 2224. The plat consists of all the information required and the planted properties meet all dimensional requirements of the zoning districts that are within the planted area. Staff is recommending approval of application 2015 and resolution 2017. With that there, I'll turn the floor back over to you. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Bradford. Would the applicant like to comment?
No, just the little minutia details that aren't, just to make sure prevalent with this. We dedicate an 11-acre park to the city, which we hope you will develop into.
It's not minutia. That's very important.
Plus roadways, plus lights, plus, 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 plus total, total, um, roadway cost and, um, land cost and lights cost and park cost exceeds 20 million bucks. But, um, we're very, very, very happy. Been a long road.
It certainly has. Okay. Diane, do we have any comments from members of the public? No advanced comments? Ray, we have anyone with their hand raised?
No, I do not, Mayor.
Okay, I have not received any comment cards from the public, uh, or anyone here on, um, agenda item R5. If anyone would like to comment, now would be the time. Okay, seeing none, I'm closing public comments for agenda item R5, open up for comments, questions from members on council. Anyone wants to ask about the name? Okay. Two, we can, we can deal with that another time, I guess. I don't know. But anyway, seeing no questions or comments from members on council, I'll look for a motion.
I make a motion to approve regular agenda item number five.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, let the record show that agenda item R5, final plat, was approved 5-0. Thank you, congratulations.
Absolutely. We're excited.
Okay, well, the applicant is eating cake. We're going, we're going to the next agenda item R6.
I think he's done though.
Public is, uh, uh, agenda item R6 is a public hearing for the second reading in adoption ordinance number 980, amending chapter 26 zoning at article four supplemental regulations by adding an entirely new section, 26, 26-75.6, airport obstructions and, and incompatible land uses within the village in order to impose requirements on such obstructions and land uses in accordance with chapter 333 for the statutes. Keith, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. This is second reading. The council saw this ordinance last month for first reading. And the month before that, we adopted our interlocal agreement with the county regarding, um, land use that applies to obstructions and air affairs with airport operations. Um, as the title of the ordinance indicates, uh, Florida statutes requires this of us. We've essentially adopted the county's code and overlaid it with our development review and approval process. There have been no changes of, in this ordinance since first reading when you, when you last saw it. And it's now before you for final adoption.
Okay. Diane, no advanced comments on agenda item R6? Ray, anyone have their hand raised on agenda item R6?
No, Mayor.
I have no comment cards submitted on agenda item R6, so I'm going to close public comment to agenda item R6 and open for questions or comments from members on council. There are no questions or comments. I'll look for a motion.
Make a motion to approve regular agenda item R6.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, please let the record show that second reading of agenda item R-six was approved five-zero. Agenda item R-seven is a public hearing for the second reading in adoption of ordinance number one-zero-two-three, adopting an amendment to the village comprehensive development plan in accordance with the mandate set forth in section one-six-three dash three-one-eight-four, et cetera, Florida statutes to add and adopt a private property rights element. I guess this is you again, Keith.
Thank you, mayor. Uh, this is second reading. The council saw this, uh, item on first reading a while ago. Uh, this is a state mandated requirement. Every local government with a comprehensive plan has to adopt a new private property rights element which recognizes, uh, property owner's right to use, uh, right to privacy, right to dispose of, their, their private property. It also provides for transparency and availability of development applications through the development review process. It's an element that we have to put in the comp plan. Quite honestly, I, I don't think it's gonna change anything we do. I think we're already very available and transparent and recognize those things in our processes. But as mandated by the state, this will now be a new element in our comp plan.
Is there any definition of what transparency is?
Um,
or is it in the eye of the beholder?
The, the policy will read that, uh, all development applications, including comprehensive plan amendments, will be made available for public review and affected persons shall be provided equal opportunity for participation in all associated hearings.
Okay. All right. Yeah, falls in that category. Okay. Diane, any, no comments for agenda item R-seven? Ray, anyone have their hand up for agenda item R-seven?
No, mayor.
All right, I have not received any public comment cards on agenda item R-seven, so I'm gonna close public comments to agenda item R-seven. Uh, open up comments or questions for members on council. If there are none, I'll look for a motion.
Motion to approve regular agenda item seven.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, please let the record show that agenda item R-seven was approved five-zero. There being no further business this evening before this council, we will now stand adjourned. Thank you all. Appreciate it.